Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, May 14, 2015. We're opening up the Town of Hingham Selectment's meeting. First thing we're going to do is approve the minutes of May 7, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written for that date?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Questions from the public? Hearing none. I'll invite Ms. Montgomery and Ms. Nickerson to step up to discuss the approval and sale and issuance of bonds.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you just take us briefly through what we're being asked to approve and sign tonight for the benefit of the audience, as well as the board?
Sure. Ted, and Sue, and I are in the process right now of issuing debt. We have completed the sale, and we're preparing for the closing, the closing scheduled for next Thursday. And part of the process of the closing is, we need to come before the Board of Selectmen and apprise you of the sale, and ask you to approve it, and to approve the issuance of the bond. So, to give you just a little bit of a, we'll give you a rundown on what that entails. On Tuesday, we held a competitive sale for the issuance of a $39 million bond, and as everybody now knows from all our debt education this year, that the bond is a permanent borrowing, and a $3.9 million note, which is a bond anticipation note, or a temporary note. So we have two debt issuances that we're presenting before you tonight. The one-year note, which was for $3.9 million, received three bids. Two of them were very competitive. The winning bid of 0.317 percent, which is less than half a percent, was submitted by TD Securities. So they would be the winning bidder on that one. The bond, it's the bond, which is the big portion of all this, and our permanent debt was for the $39 million, received six very competitive bids. The six bids ranged between 6 and 11 basis points, so they really came in bang, 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 one right after the other, which is a very good, healthy, competitive sale. The large power amount of the issue, which was the $39 million, along with the fact that we do have the AAA rating on these debt issuances, make it a very attractive investment opportunity for investors. And that, in turn, results in a competitive environment, which brings the best rate possible in to the Town of Hingham for us on our debt, and that's what happened. The winning true-interest-cost bid, which is what we award by, was 3.026 percent, and it was submitted by Fidelity Capital Markets. And when we talk about a true-interest-cost bid, we're just talking about, the bid takes into account the time value of money, because a bond is issued over a number of years. So it takes in time value. It also factors in the cost of the bond issuance when it comes down. So a true-interest cost is, that 3.0 percent is exactly our cost. The proceeds from the sale of the bond and the notes will be used to redeem a previously issued one-year ban. So basically, we have a ban due on next Friday of $45 million. We're going to be settling on this one, and bringing in $43 million. We'll use the one we're settling on to pay off the other. This is how we finance. With the issuance of this bond, I think it's important for everybody to note, we are permanently financing a number of projects that have been approved between the years of 2011 through 2014. So this is a bundled debt issuance. The purposes include the middle school, various high school fields projects, two fire trucks, four South Shore Country Club mowers, and an industrial park land acquisition, and a sewer construction project. So they probably all sound familiar, and we've been here before you on temporary issuances for these. So a vote of approval of the Board of Selectmen is required for us to issue these bonds. You should have a copy of that vote, I think, in your paperwork that Sharon provided for you.
We do.
Also, all the closing documents need to be executed, and we have left those in the Selectmen's office there. So if you could take just a minute, maybe a little more than a minute, before you leave tonight to execute those, I'd really appreciate it, because I have to turn those back to Bond Council quickly. And that's what we're doing. So we'd like to request that you vote the issuance and the sale of this debt.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I would just thank Jean and Sue. They did an analysis earlier in the year that I think this board, the advisory committee, saw as well, to really look at whether we should stay in the short-term market, or go into the long-term market. And that great analysis, I think, informed everybody's thinking, so thank you.
You did a great job.
Paul?
Thank you, sir. I want to thank as well, and obviously Ted is not here, but I will certainly thank him as well when I see him. You know, I appreciate it. I had a couple of quick questions. Just so I understood, I may not have been here on the board when some of the debt was, at least financed. So there were two bonds, one is long-term, one is short-term?
Yes. One's a bond, and one's a ban.
Oh. Well, I didn't know what a ban was, so I wanted to ask you.
A ban is a bond anticipation note. So it just means that we're borrowing temporarily on this until it goes to permanent bonding.
Okay. And what we're doing, in essence, is we're paying off an existing, did you say ban?
Paying off temporary debt. And what happens in this particular bond, and we have the middle school project, which is $32 million of the 39. And that's a two-and-a-half to a three-year project, when you're building a school of that size. So as you go through the project, from A&E in the very beginning, through to your initial construction phases, middle, and the end, we only borrow what we need to pay the expenses as we go along through each fiscal year, because we don't want to be in a position where we overborrow and risk arbitrage penalties, because these are tax-exempt bond issuances. We need to be sure that we keep our borrowing tight, so that we're spending it in a timely fashion. That's why you will always see with a big school project, you'll never see us just come right in and do a bond right off the bat, no matter how good the market is, unless we really do something very different. But it's generally ban, ban, bond. In this instance, we went ban, 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 bond, because it was a very long project. We started the school appropriations back in 2011. So all these projects are tying up. So we go to permanent debt when everything's finished, and the costs are known. And that's where we are right now with all of these projects. We've tied everything up nicely. In fact, I believe of all the authorized debt that we have, the only debt unissued at this point that remains is around $5 million. So we've really, you'll see that we don't go out to bond very often, maybe every four or five years, and that's when everything gets packaged up nicely, and we all know what the costs are going forward, and we're starting over with some new planning.
Jean, that's very helpful to me. Thank you. And the only other thing was, you mentioned the industrial park acquisition. Was that something that we bought a couple of years ago?
This was a small piece of land that was bought...
It's Recreation Park?
Right, that's what I'm thinking about.
It's not Recreation Park Drive. So it is...
It's on the ban.
It's a small, little piece that was bought prior to that...
In the industrial park?
In the industrial park, with the intention at that time of perhaps being able to put a treatment facility on it. And we have purchased that land, so that's there. So that's included in this. That was a small, I think it's, of this issue, it's $151,111. It was originally a purchase of land for $160,000. And that was done in 2011.
That's what I was going to ask you.
So that's older than you would probably remember.
Thank you, Jean.
Just a youngster.
I like to think so, I'm not so sure.
I'll sit.
Thank you.
I'll sit.
I don't have any additional questions, other than to express my appreciation. I had the pleasure of talking with Jean earlier in the week about this, and got a very informative explanation of what's before us tonight. The vote, ladies and gentlemen, is rather lengthy, so I would propose to my colleagues that we simply adopt the content of the proposed vote, which will be reflected in its entirety in the record, unless there's somebody who's got a strong, compelling wish to read it out.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't forget to stop by.
You're on it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. The next matter on the agenda is an approval of pledge of stock, transfer of stock, from Nicholas Trafon to Regina Marchionne. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing that name. Anybody here for that? Here we are. Great. Good, good.
Good evening. I'm Scott Golding from Drow and Tatia Morgan. Here also is Regina Marchioni, as well as Nick Trafoni.
How are you?
As you summarized, we're here for a pledge of stock, as well as appointment of a new manager, and a pledge of the stock back. The current owner of Queen Anne's Wine and Spirits is Nick Trafoni. He owns 100% of the stock currently. He's seeking to transfer his 100% ownership to his sister, Regina. And then there will also be a pledge back, as part of pledge of the stock back to Nick, as part of their deal to finances. Regina has significant experience with the liquor store. When Nick first purchased it over 25 years ago, Regina actually worked there and helped out in the store. Part of that, she worked at her father's store in Quincy, Trafoni Liquors. She worked there, dealing with employment issues, accounts receivable, accounts payable, and working in the store. She's also currently working at Queen Anne Wine and Spirits. She's been working there for a while. We anticipate a very smooth transition. Regina will be there. Her brother, and Nick's brother, Michael, will also be there. He's been a longtime employee, so we think it's going to be a very smooth transition. Regina has completed the TIPS off-premises training. We provided Sharon with the certification of that this evening, so that will also be in the file. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Paul? Any questions?
Hi, Regina, how are you?
Good, Paul, how are you?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
All right, good. Nice to see both. I don't have any questions.
Okay.
No questions.
I don't have any either. Good luck on your new undertaking, so.
Thank you.
I take it that all the paperwork that's necessary with respect to this filing is in order?
Yes.
Yes.
The President filed the ABCC.
Okay.
And as usual, any transaction is subject to the approval of the ABCC.
Well, we have it on the vote list here. Is anybody here that'd like to make a motion? What about you, Mary?
Sure. I'll vote to approve the new Officer Director pledge of stock, transfer of stock, and change of manager from Nicholas Trafoni to Regina Marchioni for AGT Inc., doing business as Queen Anne Wine and Spirits.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Best of luck.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you all. Nice. Okay. We've got...
Boston Golf.
Right on time, is the...
Boston Golf.
Well, they're a little early.
I think this is the lady from Boston Golf who's here.
Are you here for the Boston Golf?
Yes.
All right. I want you to sit up there. Are you Ms. Recci?
I am, yes.
Okay.
I'm here to apply to change the management on the liquor license at the Boston Golf Club, from Jack Ryan to Tina Marie Recci. I just currently held the manager on the license that will have the golf club prior to this. We've changed the management. I have, my TIPS certification is, I'm just waiting for it to come. I did finalize that yesterday.
All right. My colleagues have any questions?
I don't.
All the other paperwork is in order on this one as well?
Yes.
No, no questions.
Paul, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to approve the change of manager for new Boston Golf Club, DBA Boston Golf Club, Inc., from John Ryan to Tina Marie Recci.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay. Now we get into the meat of the meeting. Gentlemen, would you like to join us at the table, and we'll go through this one by one? Okay. All right. Harry? What do we got?
A lot. It looks like it's going to be an easy night, though. You guys have approved everything, so it's all...
Well, it's all going to go to your head.
Don't jinx it, Harry.
I'd like to take a moment, if I may, to congratulate Selectmen Power on the recent election, and we wish you well on this new appointment.
Thank you.
Okay. I see the first one here is on Hershey Street, and we're near Dale Prett Drive. Is that right?
That's correct.
Do I have the right one? 580 feet, 2-inch gas main?
Pocket gas main, that's correct.
Okay. Everybody's been given notice?
Yes.
Anything unusual about this particular construction proposal? Any blasting? Nothing?
Nope.
Okay. And is this a replacement of an existing gas main?
This is a, we're replacing beer steel. It's an ongoing process that we've been doing down the South Shore for quite a few years.
Taking out an old line, putting in a new one?
Putting in plastic, which does not corrode, so it's going to last a lot longer than the stuff that's in there.
Okay. Okay. My colleagues have any questions?
No. Dennis, thank you, and Harry. I remember you gave me the little background on it last time you were here. You've been here a few times, but the first time I sat down, I remember you filling us in, and I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
I know this is probably the first time doing this.
First time, so I might, and I know we're doing many of these, so my understanding, maybe you could just kind of give an overview of what's, how this is working, how you coordinate with Harry in the road building.
Okay. Harry communicates with National Grid before the construction season begins, and we find out in the process what kind of reconstruction's going to go on in Hingham. And we'd like to get in as fast as we can to get our pipe in, so when Harry does the restoration, get a brand-new road for at least five years.
And so this will avoid a circumstance where there's a petition to open a road when we have a moratorium that's in place?
Yes.
To the extent we can?
The only thing it would open for, if there was some sort of... With the plastic, after all the tests, everything should be fine, yes.
And are most of these proposals to just sort of improve the efficacy of the delivery system, or is it expansion, or can it be both?
All we're allowed to do, unless somebody is paying, all we're allowed to do is install, replace exactly what's in here. Because of deregulation, we're not allowed to speculate.
Okay.
So what we're going to do is going to relay every main as close as we can to the old one, tie the services over after we test them, and move to the next job.
And I noticed that there was a list, and you've done a really good job at outreach to the abutters. This is to just inform them and let them know that there may be a minor disruption in their service?
Yes. And I got quite a few calls, you know, the usual calls, whether it's somebody's 100 yards up the street, and I told them I'd have to go to marketing and sales and work with that, because, like I said, we're only allowed to replace exactly the same. And that's why the last sentence of the petition just says, just about says that.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Just so there's no confusion, every road the gas main's being replaced on doesn't mean it's on the paving list. There's a lot of gas mains in the ground that are still beer steel. There's some coated steel, there's some, you know, they've gone to all-plastic main, and there's still a lot of beer steel main, some is in excess of 100 years old, and that means we replace. Most of those roads that have gas mains 100 years old, they're probably out on the construction list. So when those do, and that is that they go over, there's some notices, they also go to residents who don't have gas, and informing them if they would like gas in the future, especially in roads that are being reconstructed, that would be the time to apply for it. That would avoid, you know, conflict with a paved road and a five-year moratorium.
Thank you.
Just one point I would like to add is that Hershey Street's not on the construction list, so that would be, they would put, you know, a binder cord of asphalt in there, then they'd come back in and do a permanent patch on it. They'll mill the trench down an inch and a half, and put a nice permanent trench in there. The roads that are going to be under construction, like we have quite a list, most of the ones in World's End, those roads, we worked out a deal with the gas company several years ago, and we keep on renewing this deal, that we split the cost of the final road repairs in lieu of eliminating that process by just putting the binder cord in, and then we share the, it's a profit-sharing thing with the gas company, so if, you know, if a gas main goes in, and it's 1,000 feet long, and the final road repairs would be $40,000, the town would get a check of $20,000, the gas company would take $20,000. So we both save on the, you know, the final patch by us paving the road. And it's worked out well over the last several years. It's, you know, given us more money to spend on our road-building account that we would normally have, so I think we're one of the only few towns that do that. Dennis probably knows better than I do, but it was something that Roger initiated, and it's worked out very well for us.
Thank you.
Once we get permission, if this is permission, then before we start, we have to meet with Harry and have a pre-construction conference. And in that, all the details of when he wants us to start, when he wants us to finish, how many places on detail, whether we're going to have plates to get cars in on our driveways, all the details surrounding that job, everything is discussed, and before we get our street-opening permit in every job here in Hingham.
Thank you.
Harry, just one follow-up on that. I think I understood you, maybe for people at home as well. So some of these streets are not on the repave list, but obviously there's a need to replace these very old beer lines. And are you saying that at that time, that anybody that doesn't have gas in that area could opt in? Is that what we said?
That's correct. They should be receiving notices from the gas company informing them of a new gas main replacement. The ones that are hooked up to the gas at the time are getting notices, and we'll explain to them what is expected of them, and what to expect during the gas main installation. The ones that don't have gas will get, you know, get a notice as well, stating that they would like to hook up the gas, that would be the time to do it, while they're putting the gas main in, so they could, you know, put it in while the construction's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Our abutters list is what we call an immediate abutters list, so we go just outside of our construction on both ends, so everybody's notified about the meeting when we have one of these petitions.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, why don't we take a vote on that, then?
I'll make a motion?
Please do.
To approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 580 feet of 2-inch gas main in Hershey Street. This gas main will originate from the intersection with Dale Prett Drive, and continue under the paved surface of Hershey Street for the entire length to completion at House Number 81. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated April 7, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next one's on Jarvis Ave. Anything unusual about this particular project? Elevations, water table, anything?
Nothing unusual, it's just that this is one of the gas mains. Most of it's going to be an extension of a gas main. Put some plastic in from Downer Ave up to roughly, I'm not sure how it was, House Number 12. It's going to be basically like an extension of the original one, and replacing some of it. But it's a gas main that, you know, we're enthusiastic to replace, because that road is on the reconstruction schedule for next year.
All right. So there's an urgency to doing this one?
Yes, but I mean, you see, it's 90 years old, most of the, I mean, they're replacing...
And it's an inch and a half also, which would be replaced with 2-inch, it's 2-inch on both ends.
Is the 2-inch the standard diameter for the residential gas line?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Questions from my colleagues?
No. I'll sit.
Okay. I'll take a motion on that.
I move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 220 feet of 2-inch gas main in Jarvis Avenue. This gas main will originate from the intersection with Howe Street, and continue under the paved surface of Jarvis Ave for the entire length at the intersection at Page Street. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including the letter dated April 7, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, we're talking about a significant project here, 890 feet, starting on, what, Boulder Glen Road?
We're not quite going.
There's a typo on that, on Evergreen Lane.
This one isn't Evergreen yet.
Oh. We're doing Boulder Glen.
Boulder Glen.
Okay. Yeah, sorry.
No problem.
I'll tackle that in a minute.
We got rock down here? Not to ask a silly question, but Boulder Glen seems to suggest something.
There's a lot of rock in that road.
Okay. You going to be extending?
They're coming to the surface.
Migrating?
Yeah, all the frost keeps on pushing them up. These are the wet soils underneath. This road is on the reconstruction list scheduled for this year, as well as most of these roads that are in the World's End neighborhood. So we're anxious to get these roads approved for gas main replacement, so that we can, you know, make sure we get these roads reconstructed before the construction season ends, hopefully by September 1st. That's our goal.
Would the roads that you're reconstructing be done first, in terms of the gas line work that we're voting on tonight, or?
We've already started the construction schedule. We've been, we have put it basically in two phases. Upper Garden Street's been paved, the final service will be put on. The micro-service will probably be done in the third week of June. We're in the process of paving Cottage and Ship Street. We'll finish that, as far as putting the asphalt down, then we'll be approaching Downer Ave, which was accelerated one year because of the condition of the road, starting to reconstruct that starting Monday, and hopefully we'll have the first course of pavement down by next Friday for the long weekend. And then, once we get the castings adjusted, then we'll put the final service on that third week of June on all those three roads, and then we'll go into the second phase, which will be Free Street. And the list of roads that we have gas mains being replaced tonight, if they get all approved.
I'm sure they will, but just curious.
I've already spoken to the gas company. They're going to, as soon as they have the first available crew to get in and start replacing all this gas main, so that hopefully, without any unexpected problems, it will be replaced in time we may, so we can get in there and start reconstruction.
Okay, good. Questions from my colleagues?
I'll sit.
Okay. I'll take a motion on that as well.
Move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 890 feet of 2-inch gas main in Boulder Glen Road. This gas main will originate from the existing 2-inch main in Martins Lane, continue under the paved surface of Boulder Glen Road for the entire length to completion at House Number 9. This gas main replaced an existing 2-inch beer steel decayed main that is approximately 51 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated April 28, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next. It's like a big one.
This is Evergreen?
Yeah.
It's in the Evergreen, yes.
The correct distance on Evergreen Lane is 1,256 feet, not the 190 that is mentioned in my letter.
Okay.
Is this a new line, Harry?
It's a replacement.
If you look at the color of the, um, blue, that shade of blue, that is for coated steel. That's why, that's why the existing, that's what the existing main is.
Okay.
Red is cast iron, and then the lighter blue is bare steel, which is not covered with anything. This was put in.
Bears, okay. Okay. Questions?
I'll set.
Need a motion?
I move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,256 feet of two-inch gas main in Evergreen Lane. This gas main will originate from the existing two-inch main in Martins Lane and continue under the paved surface of Evergreen Lane for the entire length to completion at House Number 12. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated April 28, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, next. Martins Cove? Next one?
Yes, next one is Martins Cove, that's correct, yes.
826 feet? Anything unusual about this?
I'll tell you, I got a call from the woman at House 21, and I'm not, I don't think our main is up to date, although it's plastic, up to date at House 17, because I couldn't find anything showing. I have the gas main showing where it is here today, but I did check, and she, we have an active service at House 21, so the gas main is going to House 21, so it's going up a little further, and I don't think our map has been updated. I just wanna let, like, and I, 'cause I talked to the woman, I wanted to make sure, 'cause she called, wanted to know she was, she was included, and I guarantee that she's included in having a service checked and having the main in front of her house.
So, I'm sorry, so are you saying that it, that it presently structured, it does include 17?
Yes.
Okay, it goes up to, it goes up to 18?
And it goes, it goes further, it goes further than our map is saying.
21?
Yes.
Okay, I may as well make sure.
Yeah, the mapping is outdated, I mean, I know that the gas main was extended, I think it was three years ago, for additional probably closer to 200 feet beyond House Number 18. So the mapping isn't updated, it must be in all the map.
Okay.
Does that mean the scope of the work is going to go up to House 21, or will it still conclude at 18?
It will still, you know, stop, you know, prior to House 18, because the new main was put in, it was plastic. And that's what they're doing, replacing the steel pipes with plastic.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 826 feet of two-inch gas main in Martins Cove Road. This gas main will originate from the existing two-inch main in Martins Lane, continue under the paved surface of Martins Cove Road for the entire length at House Number 18. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated April 28, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one, Crow Point, uh, World's End, continuing, Porters Cove Road.
Yes.
What is the expected life of the pipes you're laying now?
We haven't seen no corrosion at all since we started putting the plastic main in, in the early 70s.
I'm just noticing that some of these are 50 years old, so I'm just wondering if we're gonna, 50 years from now, be replacing them, or?
It appears we're not having any, any corrosion whatsoever with the plastic.
Thank you.
Do you run a wire with the plastic, so you can detect it?
Yes, they run it in the, in the trench, the 15 and a half inch trench, three feet deep, bed of sand, two-inch gas main.
Dedicated?
Wire, yeah. And then they cover that with plastic, a plastic strip, so anybody who's digging in the area would know, and then they backfill six-inch lifts to lay the gas.
Does the gas company, or does the town inspect the compaction?
Well, we inspect the compaction, they, you know, they'll do it with the right direction.
Call you out? With a project this size, Harry, is, is, is there a town guy on the job?
No. The only one that does utility opens is unfortunately me. And the gas company alone opens the street on an average of 125 times a year.
Our inspectors are back, Harry.
Do you sub this out? You sub this work out?
Yeah, Ronnie Brothers works down in South Shore doing the mains, they don't put the gas in them, they put the pipe in.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll vote, make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,227 feet of two-inch gas main in Porters Cove Road. This gas main will originate from the existing two-inch main in Porters Cove Road and continue under the paved surface of Porters Cove Road for the entire length to completion at House Number 11. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated April 28, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And turning to the last one, Seal Cove Road. Are these jobs gonna be going simultaneously?
One crew is scheduled to be coming down here, if, I think, if they were behind at all, another crew would be supplied.
What, what's the typical progress of a crew doing this kind of work in terms of feet a day?
Depending on the digging, 80 to 160 feet a day. Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes more, but that's the average.
So, couple of weeks for Seal Cove Road, give or take?
Yeah, and then afterwards, they connect the services once they're done with the, with the gas main. Make sure all the services are safe, either insert it or just check for pressure, make sure there's no leaks.
Dennis, we said that, Harry, we said that we're hoping to get this totality of the project done by September, is that the plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll set.
Motion, please?
Move to request, approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,186 feet of two-inch gas main in Seal Cove Road. This gas main will originate from the existing two-inch main in Martins Lane and continue into the paved surface of Seal Cove Road for the entire length to completion at House Number 17. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, including letter dated April 28, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on. Taking a good time here. Got some more votes to take here relative to one-day liquor licenses. Got one here down for Lincoln Maritime with respect to Party of the Wharf. Anybody like to make a motion here?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Lincoln Maritime Center care of Sue Bush for the Party on the Wharf fundraiser, to be held at Barnes Wharf on Saturday, June 13, 2015, from 6:30 to 10:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Paul, would you like to do the next one?
Sure. Move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage liquor license to the South Shore Conservatory of Music care of William Arvanites? I hope I say that right? For the summer spotlight concert series at South Shore Conservatory of Music from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM on each of the following days, July 11, 18, 25, and August 1, 2015.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages liquor license to Hingham Little League care of Richard Stracken for the Hingham Little League fundraiser to be held at Litchfield on Friday, June 19, from 7 to 11:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, that does it with the formal business. No appointments to make tonight. Continuing on with the tradition of selectmen reports, or, you go first to Ms. Foley, if there's anything she'd like to add?
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Ms. Power, would you like to?
I would just mention that this morning, I had the honor of representing the board at a ceremony that was outside here of Town Hall. This is Police Officers Memorial Week, and today is actually Peace Officers Memorial Day, and our Veterans Services Group actually presented a wreath to the Hingham Police Department to honor police officers lost in the line of duty. Very well attended, and I would just thank Jamie Litchfield, Lisa Potts, and John McHugh. It was a beautiful day, and it was a very thoughtful thing to do.
Very nice, happy to hear that. I agree, it's dangerous work, and sometimes the price that people pay is the ultimate one.
And I don't know if you were gonna mention it, but I was just gonna just let folks know at home that we are doing interviews for Talent Bank, and I have my schedule that I believe would start with an open house on the 20th, and it was in the Hingham Journal as well, so I think hopefully folks can read that, or they can check with our office if they wanna schedule, if they can't make the open house. And the only other thing is, I would say, I'm hoping to be there as an active participant this Sunday, but they're having this, the MRF, which is basically a, an exercise, how's that sound?
You're gonna kill him.
An exercise that is, follows through with a special forces officer, thus the name. Most folks, including me, will not come near to doing the full MRF, as they say, I think I made you sell it a mini MRF.
You're doing it.
My hope is to be well enough to do it, and as long as I can, as long as I can make it, I'll be there, and I just encourage anybody that, that likes, you know, any type of running and activities, and to support a great cause, it'll be Sunday. I'm told you can go online to sign up, and I know I had a great time last year, it's a great group of people down at 3A, so.
Good, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Don't get hurt.
That's the main thing.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna repeat, the Mass Memories Roadshow is this Sunday. It's received a lot of press, and I do hope that people opt to participate, because I think that's what gives its, its fullness from a town perspective. Saturday, there's the Taste of Hingham in the Square. I will not be there. I'm gonna be, hopefully, at the Westover Air Force Base watching the Blue Angels, so. Last Friday, myself, Jamie Litchfield, who's our Veteran Service Officer and keeps absence, John Asher and Scott McMillan went into the Coast Guard Station in Boston, and we had a breakfast there, and it was put on by the Coast Guard, as well as a group of individuals dedicated to helping the reservists with employers in the public and private sector. And we got a great opportunity to see how well the, the reservists, men and women of the Coast Guard, work with the active-duty Coast Guardsmen. And I had never really been exposed to what the Coast Guard does until that point, but I can tell you, ladies and gentlemen, they do a very, very important job, and they have a wide variety of responsibilities. So I know there are people out in the community that are employers, and I would only ask that, you know, you keep an open mind to those men and women that serve our country in uniform, if, if they need additional time or some kind of accommodation. It's, it's not really a cost to the community, to me, it's a contribution to the country. So I, I thought that was a very positive thing, and I thank the Veteran Service Office for doing that, inviting me to that. Just generally, we're at the early stages of going forward, I, letting the public know that I, we're gonna be doing liaison assignments shortly. I've extended to my colleagues here, just, I'd be interested in whatever choices you would enjoy doing, both of you.
Thank you.
Trying to work forward on the scheduling, too. I think we're gonna stick to the Thursday night, that seems to be the consensus. We're talking about every other week versus every week, still working through that, I'd be interested in your views on that. You know, I find that, yeah, after 10 o'clock, it gets a little harder to make good decisions, so if it means meeting a little more frequently, but getting out at a decent hour, I kinda like that idea.
Sure.
But that's just me. Sharon was nice enough to make up a, a new label for me, but I miss my old one that I've had for, oh, for a long time.
Still have it.
Yeah. Memorial Day's coming up, I'd invite and encourage the public to attend the ceremony. And this is a, this is a holiday, it's a, it's an expression of our respect for those that have died in the service of our country. And it's a great time of year, just before summer kicks off. So with that, unless anybody's got anything to add, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Katie, we did the gas pipe, it's already been done?
Yes, ma'am.
It's 7:50 on the, on the notice I heard.
Well, we're, we're moving, we moved right along, and...
Well, I mean, 7:50 is...
What was your question?
Well, it's just that I came for the gas pipe here, we...
Do you wanna reopen up the meeting to talk to her about it?
Sure.
Would you like me to walk outside and see if Harry and Dennis?
Sure.
Help me if I could find him, should.
We're gonna reopen the meeting then, for purposes of discussing that, since you came.
Well, I mean...
Yeah, we can, I think we can model through it.
Sure.
Where do you live, ma'am?
Porters Cove Road.
Okay, we'll do that vote. I will tell you, just by way of background, that the gas company, Dennis Regan, as well as a representative from the Highway Department, Harry Sylvester, Assistant Projects Engineer, came in with a series of petitions with respect to street openings, and Porters Cove Road was one of them. And it's approximately 1,227 feet of two-inch plastic gas main that is gonna be replaced in Porters Cove roadway. And that is anticipated to be initiated this summer, and the average progress of the contractor that does it is anywhere between 80 to 160 feet a day, 140 feet a day. So for this kind of project, you would anticipate two weeks of construction, give or take. And they test all the, the connections that they'll make. It's designed to replace steel, two-inch bare steel, and a lot of that is old. It's, you know, some of it, in some of these instances, is 90 years old. And, you know, it's done under a series of specifications, subject to approval by the, the Highway Department. So it's, it's inspected as it's done, all of these projects have this kind of protection given to it and oversight. Does, does that help?
Yes, I just, you know, had some, wanted some idea of when it would be starting.
We didn't, we didn't get a firm date on any of the start, but some of these roadways are subject to being reconstructed, so my sense is that those will get the, the priority in terms of work. But all of these that we voted on are anticipated being done this year. Yes, ma'am.
Before winter.
Yes, ma'am.
September, hopefully, they said.
All right, well, thank you very much, I'm sorry, but that's what the doctor said.
Don't be sorry, we're sorry that we...
We moved along faster than we expected.
Do you have gas yourself?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll be fine.
You'll be cooking with gas.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'll move to adjourn again.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.